This makes
Good morning, everybody. Welcome. This hearing of the Subcommittee on Conservation, Energy and Forestry titled "To Review the U.S. Forest Service's Proposed Groundwater Directive" will come to order. And, once again, good morning. I want to welcome everyone to this hearing of the Conservation, Energy and Forestry Subcommittee to review the Forest Service's Proposed Groundwater Directive. And while the topic of water management is absolutely critically important for all Americans, it is especially so for our farmers or ranchers in rural communities who live off the land. As an example, water management is of critical importance to Western members of this committee, given the scarce supplies that we've seen in recent years. Now, among the Forest Service's multiple-use mission, it's essential to note that the two principal reasons specifically articulated within the WEC Act behind the creation of our National Forest System was to regulate the flow of navigable streams, or for the production of timber. In May, USDA issued for public comment a proposed directive relating to the management of groundwater, not navigable streams, in our National Forest System. The proposal outlines the Forest Service's justification for this policy and provides detailed instruction for field staff in managing groundwater resources. The proposal lays out the scope of acceptable groundwater uses and establishes new processes and procedures for special-use authorizations that involve access to and withdrawal of groundwater resources. Now, I, along with other members of the Subcommittee, have heard concerns from forestry and agricultural groups about the scope, lack of clarity, and potential impacts if this directive were to be adopted as currently proposed. And we've heard concerns that the directive could result in less management on the forest system, more litigation, potential preclusion of private water rights, and increasing increased permitting requirements for activities on the National Forest System. For many Americans around the country rely on national forest lands, these possibilities are beyond comprehension. Several groups have questioned the legal justification used by the Forest Service in putting forth this proposal. Multiple groups have suggested that the proposed directive asserts the existing authority of states to manage groundwater. Now, there's a wide range of management challenges affecting the health of the National Forest, including a lack of much-needed timber harvesting, which significantly contributes to ever-increasing problems of wildfires and invasive species. And I remain concerned that this directive would create more problems than it proclaims to solve, and will further undermine the ability of the agency to carry out its management responsibilities. And I'm pleased that the Forest Service has extended, very appreciative that the Forest Service has extended the comment period for another month to allow more time for interested groups to weigh in on this proposal. And we have before us expert testimony on this complicated topic, and I thank them all for being here. And I want to welcome back Chief Tedwell, who's appeared before the Subcommittee on a number of occasions, and thank him for his service in the United States Forest Service and to our country. Now, I've enjoyed our working relationship over the last few years and look forward to continuing to work together to find ways to improve the health, the economic productivity, and recreational opportunities within the National Forest System. And we look forward to Chief's testimony in offering the agency's perspective about how this directive came about and why the agency believes that this directive is necessary, and fundamentally, how the Forest Service believes it has actual legal authority to take this unprecedented move. We'll also hear from the second panel witnesses, who will share with us their views on this proposal, and any concerns they wish to offer publicly. And this hearing is an opportunity for members of the Subcommittee to learn about this sometimes complicated topic and engage our panel witnesses. And I now recognize my friend, serving for this hearing at this point, as a ranking member for his opening statement, Mr. Schrader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Appreciate our panel and Chief Tedwell for being here, answer some of our concerns. I hope that we'll get a better understanding of why the Forest Service is approaching groundwater issues. The biggest concern I think many of us have is the budget itself. Forest Service budget itself seems always under siege. Wildfires consume an ever-increasing amount of it. The ability to actually manage our forests is in question at this point in time. So, very concerned about taking on a whole 'nother initiative, no matter how well-intended it is, and where we're going to get the resources to actually do that. So, with that, I'm looking forward to the hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'd like to welcome the first witness today.
Our only witness for this first panel, Mr. Thomas Tedwell, chief of the United States Forest Service, U.S. Department of Agriculture here in Washington, certainly no stranger to this committee. And welcome back, chief. It's, really appreciate you being here, and so that we could have this hearing and have this discussion. So, Chief Tedwell, please begin whenever you're ready.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee, thank you for the opportunity to be here today to discuss our proposed internal directive on how to deal with groundwater, and the issues that are resolved around that. Mr. Chairman, as you mentioned, you know, this concept of healthy watersheds, clean abundant water, it was one of the foundational reasons for the National Forests, why they exist today, to secure this favorable conditions of water flow for the multiple uses and the benefits to, that sustain our economies and also maintain the communities across the nation today. Without a clear and publicly-vetted agency direction, our agency decision-makers have a very, very poor defensible position to be in when it comes to evaluating proposals that may impact groundwater. These are our proposals, things that we have to act on. And if we don't have a more systematic approach, this is going to continue to lead to more public concern, more controversy, and more lawsuits, as the public expects and demands more from management of the public lands. So, in May of this year, we put out our proposed groundwater directive to provide a consistent and systematic approach to evaluate and monitor the effects to groundwater from Forest Service proposed activities. And now, we have extended the comment period so that we especially have more time to be able to sit down with the states and be able to discuss with them with some of the concerns that they've already expressed. But I need to clarify a few key points of this proposal. This directive is not new authority. The directive only clarifies our existing agency authorities and provides a consistent and systematic approach to evaluate the effects of groundwater, evaluate the effects on groundwater from new proposals on National Forest System land. It's not a new regulation. We did put the notice in the Federal Register, because that is the format that we're used to, it's what our publics are really used to, and so that's why we use the Federal Register. It does not infringe on the state's authority, nor do we infer that the proposed directive extends to the appropriation of water. Although the term "managed groundwater" was used frequently in the draft, we specifically mean to inventory and evaluate the data and to be able to monitor the effects of uses on the National Forest and grasslands. Now, part of our proposed directive, to be able to strengthen our cooperation with other government entities, states, other federal agencies, when there is a proposal that is adjacent to National Forests that we believe may affect, you know, the groundwater on the National Forest, we will comment on it, if there's a process. But it's just a comment. This does not infer that we have any authority beyond the National Forest System lands. But if there's an activity that we feel may impact, you know, the groundwater under the National Forest, may impact water uses on the National Forest, we will, you know, comment to the entity that's going to make the decision on that. The groundwater directive does not impose any new restrictions on mineral or oil/gas development. Our proposed directives do not change the existing situation of what we currently do when it comes to making decisions about minerals management and oil and gas development. Now, the proposed directive does assume that there is, that groundwater and surface water are hydrologically connected, unless it's been demonstrated otherwise. Now, this assumption is based on what we believe is well-developed scientific understanding, but also recognize that this is not always going to be the case, and when it's not, that's great, we identify that, and we can move on. But I do want to point out that this is the approach that many of the states also recognize this interconnectivity. And this proposed directive does not change the existing authorities of the states to allocate water, and has no bearing on state law for purpose-of-use allocation. Now, Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee, I understand that water is a contentious issue. Our intention here with this proposed directive is to make it a little less so, by having a consistent, systematic, transparent approach, I believe we'll be better partners with the states to ensure that the public continues to benefit from abundant clean water, but also we'll be in a better position to defend our decisions as we see more and more challenges coming from the courts. Now, we look forward to reviewing all the input that's been received on this proposal, and already have heard ways to be able to clarify and improve the directive. Once we evaluated all the comments, we will determine the path forward and the content of the final directive. Now, this concludes my oral remarks, and I'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Chief Tedwell. The Chair would like to remind members that they will be recognized for questioning and order of seniority for members who were present at the start of the hearing, and after that, members will be recognized in order of their arrival, and I appreciate members' understanding. I am going to defer the, I'll take the final position for questioning, so, at this point, please recognize the gentleman from Ohio, Mr. Gibbs, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief Tedwell, for coming in. My question, I won't get into the legality if the Forest Service has the legal authority to, under the WEC Act, to whatever, but my concern is, I want to do a scenario. I'm going to say I'm an adjacent landowner to forest land property, and I'm looking to develop a shale-oil/gas production, and we have to go down through the water ocrifer, which, the water ocrifer runs through forest land, okay? Water ocrifer typically, well, in my area of the country, maximum depth's 300 feet, you know, 150, 300 feet. The shale exploration in my area is 4,000 to 6,000 feet. And I would contend the only connection that shale and gas production to the water ocrifer would be that conduit, that borehole, as long as we do meet all the requirements, you know, that we're doing triple casing, triple cementing, seal that off, so there's not the conduit for the bad stuff, the saltwater stuff to come up and pollute the ocrifer, or coming down from the surface. Now, if the Forest Service, you know, is concerned about groundwater, my concern is, are they going to say, "Well, you can't do oil and gas exploration because there's a possibility," even though, in my opinion, it's almost 100% remote contaminating the groundwater, I mean, the ocrifer, if it's done right, to say, "Well, the ocrifer flows into the forest land, you know, under this directive, we can stop you from doing that." And so, can you expound on what I'm trying to say here?
You know, this, our directive and our current authority, you know, we, it's not to stop. What it is, is to disclose the potential effects, and if there's opportunities to mitigate the impact of those effects, to be able to pursue what's available under our authorities and the current law. If, you know, if it's an operation that's off the National Forest, all we can, all we will ever do is comment, and if the state, whoever is the authorizing entity, if they have a process for, to receive comments, we'll send in a comment. But we have no authority off. But, and then the other question, if, if there isn't this interconnectivity, that's a good thing. And, and there's definitely places where there is separation between what's, you know, occurring on the surface use in the groundwater, and, you know, we'll document that, but...
Well, I guess in the scenario I was laying out, the interconnectivity would be the ocrifer flows underneath my property and the forest land property. And so, there's where you could, and so, if the Forest Service has a director and say, let's just say, in the future, they have a policy, we're not going to allow, we're not going to do any mineral exploration or extraction on forest land property, and now the ocrifer flows through the neighboring property, so we're going to fight you to stop that, that's, I guess, is my concern. And I would say, there isn't really interconnectivity other than the ocrifer, and we're just going down through the ocrifer, and we're meeting all the requirements to protect that ocrifer, that, I'm just concerned about the expansion in the future of the Forest Service, you know, using this ability to expand. Now, I guess to follow through on that, what's the position of the Forest Service now on, let's say, we're doing directional drilling in the shale, and, and they want to go under you guys, and the Forest Service, obviously, they had to sign a lease and do that, what's the Forest Service's position on that now? Are they allowing exploration on those instances where the wellhead's not on their property, but, but sign leases to allow directional drilling under their property?
If the area of the National Forest is leased, yeah, we work with the leaseholder to be able to mitigate the impacts so they can access the oil and gas resource. And we have many examples throughout the country where we have oil and gas operations that have been in place for decades. And that, we also have been able to mitigate, you know, impacts on, also on groundwater. So, a lot of this, we've already been doing, but what we find is we have this inconsistent approach where in one forest is doing, dealing with it one way, another forest is addressing it another way, and then we get challenged in court, like, we've had a couple cases out west where, these were on my... Like, we've had a couple cases out west where, and these were on mining, uh, proposals, and the court said, "The Forest Service, you did not evaluate the effects of this proposal on groundwater." It didn't say you have to stop it, but the court was very clear, "Forest Service, you need to evaluate what are going to be the impacts and to be able to disclose those." And when it's a Forest Service decision, and we have an opportunity to mitigate the effects, that's what we want to work on, because that's what this is about. It's, it's not about allocation of the water, but if there's a chance for us to, to mitigate the impacts, um, by working together, which we commonly do with, with many proponents already, um, that's what this is about, but it helps us to put in a more defensible position so that, you know, we're, we're driving how our process versus having, um, individual courts direct us about how to, to deal with it.
My time's expired, but I just want to, just a quick comment is, I'm just concerned about the private property rights adjacent to forest lands and how that's all affected. And essentially, since we see this rule coming from the Army Corps of Engineers and the EPA and their jurisdictional expansion of waters in the United States, that's, you know, that's frozen my rationale here. Thank you, thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Gentlemen, your time has expired. Now, recognize, uh, Mr. Schrader for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I appreciate the line of questioning that Representative Gibbs had, uh, being thoughtful about how we approach this, and just because you're drilling through a certain ocafor, does that mean that's going to be regulator caused problems, even if there's no contamination? Along those lines then, what's the thought of, uh, the Forest Service in terms of using good science to evaluate whether a groundwater resource is being impacted? I assume there'll be testing, and if there's contamination, then and only then would there be a regulation issued, rather, because there are certain agencies that tend to just issue, you know, blanket regulations, uh, on the off chance that something might occur as opposed to dealing with data. What, what's your inclination, Chief?
No, there's, there's no, there'd be no blanket regulation or any, anything like that. This is going to be on a case-by-case basis, based on the, the science. And when there is, um, uh, potential to impact, uh, you know, the, um, the quality of, our quantity of groundwater, we need to, um, evaluate that and, and be able to share that with the public. And if there are opportunities to mitigate it within our authorities, yeah, we're going to always work, um, to be able to pursue that. If it means a different way, a different location of, um, the extraction, for instance, we're going to work on that. If it's dealing with large mining operations, to be able to, to look at ways to be able to mitigate that with, as much as we can within the authorities, we'll do that.
But that would be, your, your, what you would do would be based on a problem you've identified as opposed to a potential?
Yeah, yes. This, um, once again, this proposal is about having a consistent approach to evaluate and monitor the effects.
So, a little different line of questioning here, the resources for the agency are limited. Uh, and, uh, while I think this is an extremely important, uh, area for us to, to discuss with you, uh, there's another one that is very definitely a problem, and that's called the wildfire issue. Out west in particular, but we see it wherever lightning strikes, uh, the wildfire issue is sucking the life out of Forest Service budget. It's my understanding that up to 70% of the Forest Service budget used to be for managing forest lands, you know, letting contracts, good forest health, uh, all sorts of projects that we used to be able to do. Now, my understanding, Chief, is it's down to only 30%. Uh, there's a bill out there, a bipartisan bill, both the Senate and the House, Senators Wyden and Crapo, myself and Representative Simpson, trying to, you know, treat these, these horrific wildfires, the, the few, the 1% of the wildfires that are out of control and cataclysmic, uh, as disasters, just like we do, you know, the flooding issues, hurricane issues, all that. Uh, and, and trying to restore, hopefully, your ability to keep your budget under control for the most part, uh, wouldn't have any added cost, it would impact the disaster budget just like any disaster would, but no added cost according to Congressional Research Service. Don't you think it'd be wise to prioritize, you know, the wildfire aspect, uh, of, of this budget to try and give you the resources you need? Uh, if you had to choose between the groundwater issue and the wildfire issue, which is more important right now for your budget, sir?
Well, if I had the flexibility to choose, there's no question, to resolve, um, this issue around wildfires, um, costs, and Congressman, I cannot thank you enough for your leadership, um, to put forward the, um, the bipartisan, um, legislation, and I, I extend that appreciation to the chairman and almost every member of this subcommittee about, uh, your support to be able to solve that problem. There's just no question that, uh, the conditions have changed on, on the lands over the last, um, decade-plus, and the cost of fires continue to go up, and we will do whatever it takes to be able to suppress those where we need to, but at the same time, it's had a really detrimental, um, impact on the agency's ability to manage. And as the chairman mentioned in his opening remarks, the need for us to do more to be able to restore the health of our forests, the resiliency of our forests. So, there's no question, that's, that's a much more pressing issue. This proposed directive, our intent with this was to actually, um, reduce some of the problems that we see coming down, um, the potential for court direction that in some cases I could force us to do more than, than we really need to. So, that's what the purpose of this is actually to maybe take this issue off the table, uh, but at the same time allow us to really focus on what really is a much more important, pressing, um, issue for us to be dealing with.
Very good. Thank you. Now, you'll back, Mr. Chairman.
I thank the gentleman. Uh, I now recognize the gentleman from Arkansas, Mr. Crawford, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, appreciate you being here today. Um, USFS has claimed through the comment period, the public has indicated that it expects the USFS to review potential impacts to groundwater resources. In your opinion, does review also mean manage?
Um, once again, I need to just, when we talk about manage, we're referring to doing the inventory of, and monitor the effects of our activities on groundwater. So, it's to be able to disclose those, and when we're occu, when we're authorizing a surface use, if there's something that can be done to mitigate the impact on groundwater from our decision, we want to be able, first, be able to disclose what those impacts are, and then, second, to pursue, um, ways to mitigate that. And when there's no effects, and that is just as important as anything, just to be able to disclose that, because we're often challenged that, um, especially when it comes to some, some mining, uh, proposals, when oil and gas proposals, that we get challenged about that this proposal's going to have, you know, more effects than we're disclosing. And because we don't have a systematic approach, it puts us in a more difficult position to be able to say, "Well, uh, Your Honor, we have this approach, we've done, we've taken these steps to be able to evaluate, um, we've, we've done inventory, we've been working with the states to understand, you know, the relationship here, and based on, on our, um, outcome of this, we feel that this proposal has no effect." That's just as important or more so than in those cases where we have the opportunity to, to be able to mitigate the surface use in a way that has less of an impact on groundwater.
Okay. Um, I'm curious about the, uh, the comment period. Where have the majority of the comments during the comment period come from, or was it, uh, is there a particular group or a particular region that was, uh, or association or anything? Is that we're, that were particularly or especially represented?
Well, we've, we've received comments from, um, you know, states across the country. Um, there's definitely been more, um, from the western states and maybe the eastern states, and we've received, um, you know, comments from, um, all sides of this issue, everything from that we should stop this, the, the states can handle this issue, you don't need to do anything to Forest Service, this doesn't begin to, um, carry out your authorities, you, you need to, you know, be, uh, put much more requirements, et cetera, into this. And we tried to, to be very clear that this is, is not a rule, it's not a regulation, it's our internal, internal direction that we issue, um, so that we're taking a consistent approach to evaluate this. And there's no question on the comments that, um, there are some things that we need to, to change in here to clarify the intent. I mean, that's one of the things that we've heard loud and clear, um, we've had some good comments, we've had good discussion, um, that we need to, you know, clarify it, and I go back to that one term about manage, um, recognize, without any question, we need to clarify that, um, because for some, some interpretation of the term manage, it means more than what we intended. So, that's definitely one of the, the first things that we're going to be working on.
Okay. Um, did you get any comments during the public comment period from any federal agencies?
Um, you know, I'd have to go back and, and to check on, on that with, um, you know, the group, we're still have an open comment period, but, um, I, I'm not aware of any at this point, but I'm sure there's probably going to be some.
Is it pretty commonplace for other federal agencies to weigh in in a public comment period?
Um, it, it often is, um, depending on what the, the issue is, um, for us to receive comments.
Do they get, uh, greater consideration than a private citizen, in your opinion?
They get the same consideration of, of all, of, all the comments that come in, whether it's from, you know, the states, from individuals, um, we look at all of them as a, a way to be able to move forward with this, to, um, be able to clarify this, um, and at the same time to make sure that, um, you know, we, we have a direction that's, can be followed and understandable.
Um, you mentioned just, uh, just a second ago in, in, in responding, that this was an internal directive, and you said that "we" issued this, and can you define "we"? Can you be a little more specific?
It's, uh, the US Forest Service.
Okay, is there an individual that, that directed this? Was it you, or was it a, a collective effort, or?
This is mine. Um, this is something we've actually been working on for, um, for, um, quite a few years, recognizing that there was a need to have a consistent approach. It wasn't as, probably as pressing as it is today because we haven't had, in the past, we hadn't had as much interest, um, through litigation as we've seen recently, and so, but it's something we've been, um, working on for several years, um, to be able to put this forward.
Several, meaning what, three, four, five?
Uh, I think some of our folks have probably been working on this, thinking about this for probably more like six or seven years.
All right. Thanks, Chief, I appreciate it. I'll yield back.
Thanks, the gentleman for yodeling back, and now we're going to recognize the gentle lady from, uh, Washington, uh, Ms. Dobain, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, and thank you, Chief, for being here with us today. Um, I want to quickly go back to, um, a little bit of the, the question that Congressman Schrader had brought up with respect to wildfires, um, and I just wanted to get a quick update from you on kind of what the state is right now, wildfires on that federal lands, and, and what you're seeing right now.
Well, Congresswoman, uh, just a few weeks ago, we were in a, a place where we had over 20,000 firefighters out, and we were, um, close to being in a position where we would not have enough resources to, um, to respond to any more new fires. Fortunately, we had, um, a very favorable weather pattern move in, especially through your state, um, through the northwest, that's really moderated the fire season to the point where today, um, we're in very good shape, except for, um, the state of California, where the fire in northern California just topped over 100,000 acres, um, yesterday, and some other fires there in the Sierras. So, the situation is moderated. Um, a few weeks ago, I sent out the direction for us, once again, to, um, stop activities so that we could prepare to transfer funds from other program areas to be able to fund suppression. Um, now with this moderation, um, we're now looking at having to change that direction because we probably won't have to transfer anywhere near what we thought we'd have to, but at the same time, it's had an impact for a few weeks on our programs, and, and here I'm now having to call up my regional foresters and say, "Okay, now with this favorable weather, what can we possibly get done over the next, um, you know, two weeks here, three weeks in September?" So, it's been very fortunate, um, but at the same time, it's been a problematic fire season, especially as you, as you know, in your state, with, uh, hundreds of homes that have been lost there, um, you know, from, um, from those fires. And it's just another pressing issue that, um, and once again, I just appreciate everyone's support to be able to find a solution to this issue so that we would no longer be faced with this disruptive practice of having to stop operations to transfer money.
Yep. Um, I've heard that there have been challenges with OMB and how fire funding is allocated. Has progress been made there?
Um, we have, uh, I think we're working, um, very well with OMB, um, they understand the problem, they've been very supportive of finding a solution. It was in the, the president's budget request, um, for this year, recognizing we needed to have a different approach to dealing with some of the large fires, and that's why the, uh, the proposal that's in the president's budget is, um, you know, merits are, it, um, tracks very well with the introduced legislation to recognize that 1% to 2% of these fires need to be viewed as a natural disaster, and that we should be able to access emergency funding to be able to pay for those, where the 98% to 90% of fires every year will still be paid for within our budget, just like it has been in the past, but this would eliminate the need to transfer for money. And so, OMB's been, you know, very supportive to be able to, um, to, um, to work with us and be able to talk to folks, to explain about how this would actually work, um, with the recognition that this problem has, um, over the years, it's just got to the point that it's just really impacted our ability to, to carry out our mission and be able to, to restore these lands and also provide for all the services that the public expects.
Um, let me move back to the, uh, to the groundwater, um, issue, and I wondered, are tribes and states treated equally in your, um, directive?
Well, with, um, with tribes, we do an additional consultation, um, you know, with, with the tribes on all of our, um, all of our proposals, and so, we work very closely with the states, we coordinate, we sit down and, and work with them. We do the same thing with tribes, but we also have an additional, um, formal consultation that we, um, have to work with, we get to work with through our, with our tribal, um, entities.
Okay. Hey, thank you very much for your feedback, appreciate it. I yield back, Mr. Chair.
Thank the gentle lady, uh, for yodeling back. Now, recognize the gentle lady from South Dakota, Ms. Noem, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Chief Tidwell, thank you so much for being here today, and I appreciate all the help that you've given me in South Dakota with the Black Hills and dealing with the pine beetle epidemic that's gone on, and I know that you've got a lot of wildfires and situations across the country you're dealing with, um, but this new directive does have me really concerned, and I have a letter here in front of me from the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources, and I want to tell you some of the concerns that they have. They are strongly opposed to this new directive. They cite lack of authority, uh, that the Forest Service as one of the reasons for this directive. They believe it would expand the agency's responsibilities with no congressional oversight or deference to state water laws. Um, I want to read a few of the other concerns that they have in their letter, redundancy that would come forward as a Forest Service taking part in these new actions in evaluating water quality. Also, um, they have, believe that delays and burdens to the state permitting processes, that there's a lack of scientific basis for groundwater ecosystems, a lack of due process, and the one that probably concerns me the most is the lack of state input. One of the things that they brought out in their letter that does concern me quite a bit, and that you actually talked about earlier in your testimony, is that you came forward with this directive or that this is a result of lawsuits that you faced in the past where you were found deficient in how you evaluated, uh, water quality throughout the process. I believe that, from what I'm interpreting this new directive to say is that you believe that that means you need to mitigate, um, the effects of what the activities are that you're taking, and when you say mitigate and manage, that that means taking action on your part to deal with groundwater and groundwater quality, that you don't have the authority to do so. And throughout this process, there's no timeframes listed within the directive that would constrain you to making that evaluation process go forward, there's nothing that says you're going to consult with any of the state agencies who have always been responsible for monitoring these water quality issues. You would, could potentially burden these state agencies by questioning every single water permit that's adjacent to or on Forest Service land. Uh, you could see why this would alarm everybody who's been in charge of this process in the past, when you suddenly through a directive claim jurisdiction over something that you've never been able to do before. How would you anticipate dealing with some of these concerns that some of these state agencies and people that live in these areas have raised?
Well, Congresswoman, first of all, one of the reasons we extended the comment period is have additional time to be able to sit down primarily with the states, to be able to, um, you know, hear their concerns directly and be able to, you know, discuss this. And as I've already stated, um, we recognize that, based on the comments that we received on this proposed directive, that there are some things we need to clarify, and we need to make it very clear, especially what, when we talk about manage, it's talking about the evaluating inventory, um, of those effects. evaluating inventory of those effects, it has nothing to do with the allocation of water, and so, we need to find ways to make that clear, so that folks fully understand that. Your point about, of course, we want to work with the states, and in almost all of our states, we work very closely with this, and if, you know, if the states are pulling this information together already, and they can share it with us, so that as we make our decision, we can include that, you know, in our analysis, that's very, very helpful. So ideally, this is, will actually make us a better partner with the states, so that we'll have a predictable process of what we need, the information that we need, to be able to evaluate the effects, to be able to disclose those, if there are effects or not, include that in our analysis, and then be able to go forward with implementing the project. When we talk about mitigating, it's to mitigate where we have the authority with a surface occupancy. It's not about the water. It's about, you know, we have the responsibility that if we're authorizing an activity, and there's some things that we can do to mitigate the effects, whether it's on, you know, affecting the quality of groundwater, it's not only something that we're required to do, you know, it's something that I would think, from what we've heard, the public wants us to do that. And, but if we don't know, that's where we've been really challenged, and in some situations, we do not have a good process in place, and so, we have not pulled the information together. We haven't reached out to the states to ask them, because we haven't, our forests haven't had the direction to go, okay, how are we supposed to deal with this? So we've been all over the board on this, and that's what's created, you know, really the need to have this consistent approach, and yes, there are some additional court challenges that we're having to deal with, and that isn't the only reason for this, but it's definitely one of the benefits that'll come out of this, it'll put us in a more defensible position.
I'm out of time. Thank you.
I sure will. This time, we're pleased to recognize the gentle lady from New Hampshire for five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Chief Tidwell, and all of the witnesses here today. Forestry is a very big deal in New Hampshire. It plays a key role in the economy of our North Country, providing timber for builders, pulp for paper mills, and fuel to heat and power our homes and businesses. And we, in the Granite State, know that a thriving, responsible timber industry is vital, not only to the economic health of our state, but to the health and longevity of our beautiful forests. So, we are pretty fortunate that folks understand this balance, and though I frequently hear from the timber community about a number of challenges facing them, I have not heard from them about this groundwater directive. But what I do hear about, if I could take just a minute, is that the reference that you made to fires in the West, and I want to be supportive of my colleagues, actually, my brother lives in a very small town, Twisp, Washington, that they spent an entire month in fear that they would lose a beautiful home that he built, and everything that his family has worked for. But the challenge for us back East is when your budget is taken over by the wildfires, we have delays in the Forest Service's ability to effectively manage the national forests and meet the timber harvest goals, and I've been hearing from a number of my constituents in the timber and forestry sector about the problem in meeting our timber harvest goals, because they can't get the forester out to approve the cut. So, if you would comment on that, and if there's anything that we could do to be supportive so that you have sufficient funding for the fires and supporting our timber industry.
Well, your point that the fires out West and the cost of dealing with the suppression does also affect our eastern forests, because when we need to stop operations, delay operations, postpone operations to be able to transfer money, you know, it impacts everyone, and you've seen it in your state, and often, you know, Congress has been great to repay the money, usually, you know, within the next three to six months, that's very helpful, but we lose out on that field season. And in a case like in your state right now, this is the prime field season for folks to be out there prepping, you know, the timber sale, doing the surveys that need to be done for, you know, this coming winter's work, and also for next year. So then, when we slow down and have to stop operations, especially in this time of year, it really has the most effect on next year's work, and that's why we just need to find a solution to be able to stop this disruptive practice. And then, once again, you know, I just can't thank everyone enough for the recognition and your support of this bipartisan, bicameral approach to be able to resolve this once and for all. Congress tried to resolve this once with the Flame Act, so this is not like it's a new issue. That didn't quite work out as intended. We believe that this is a better proposal that would actually solve this and allow us to actually be more proactive, and that's the other benefit of this, is that it potentially would allow us to be able to invest more in the restoration, restoring our forests, restoring the forest health, and put us in a better position so that we reduce the threat to communities, reduce the threat to your brother. I was up in his community this summer and talked to the folks up there about how difficult a year they were having, but that's the benefit. So this proposal would help all of us, help every state in the system, and I think it's, just really appreciate everybody's work on this. I know it's not an easy issue, but it's definitely one that would be very helpful if we could get it resolved.
Great. Well, you can count on my support, and thank you. I yield back. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, the gentle lady for yowing back. Now, recognize the gentleman from Colorado, Mr. Tipton, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief Tidwell, thank you for taking the time to be here. One of the concerns that we have, and I know you're well aware of this, out of the state of Colorado, we are a headwaters state. Most of our water obviously originates on federal land. We've got the complexity that that water coming off perhaps of Forest Service land may flow through private land, onto BLM land, maybe even back onto Forest Service land, so a very complex issue, and I know our state has always appreciated, and in fact, demands that the state law, 1876, when we are incorporated, as with other Western states, that water is a private property right. We have state law, we've got a priority-based system that we expect to be respected. And the concern I think I would like to bring up, given the groundwater directive that we're seeing out of the Forest Service, when we couple this with the EPA waters of the U.S., we're seeing effectively, in my opinion, the biggest water grab in American history, in terms of our ability to be able to grow our communities, to be able to protect the interests of the state of Colorado, and I think we've got a pretty good track record of being able to manage that. What concerns me, Chief, and I'd like you to be able to speak to, is in the Forest Service manual, it states that your employees claim water rights for water used by permities, contractors, and others to carry out activities related to multiple use objectives. This is in the manual. We now see the Forest Service Groundwater Management Directive, and it seems to me that this literally doubles down on the policy to be able to obtain water rights in the name of the United States, but at this current time, this is a massive groundwater management policy that you're trying to put forward. So given the scope of this overall policy, combined with the directive to obtain water rights under applicable state law for groundwater and groundwater-dependent service water needed by the Forest Service, doesn't this effectively give the regional Forest Service staff and the agency approval to go after any water right rising off of Forest Service lands that they deem necessary to carry out the broad objectives of the manual?
This proposed internal directive does not infer anything into water rights, does not infringe on the state's responsibility, their authority to allocate water. What this is about is to just evaluate and monitor the effects of our actions on groundwater, and if there's an opportunity to mitigate adverse effects, then we have the responsibility to be able to pursue that with the surface occupancy, where we do have the authority. When it comes to, you know, use, the multiple uses, you know, for decades, we've had a policy in place where the best assurance we could provide the public that multiple use would continue is that when water is required for that multiple use activity, the best assurance was to be able to hold that water for the public, and there's been questions, some of the policies that we've had in place going back to the mid-'80s, and that we've worked with, like with the ski areas back in '80s, to put a term and condition on their permits in place that worked very well, had no adverse impact on any ski areas. In 2004, I personally worked with National Ski Area Association to modify that clause so that it would work for everyone. We thought we had it done, then a few years later, we find that, once again, it wasn't in compliance with all state laws, so we sat down again to be able to modify that, and now we're to a point where we're proposing a way to just keep the water, you know, tied to the use, and it's just to protect the public.
Does it kind of concern you, though, Chief, when we're pursuing these policies? There is a threat, and one thing you did not speak to is respect for the state laws. This is, there is case history for this throughout the Western United States. You weren't speaking to that, but when we're talking about ski area permits, there's nothing in your policy that protects actually the ski areas. You still speak in those broad, general terms, in terms of some of the agreement that's coming out, and that's why we'd introduced and passed through the House with bipartisan support, the Protecting Our Water Rights Act.
Well, we, without any question, we respect the state's authority on water rights. It's one of the reasons that we sat down to change the clause that we had in those permits, and when you think about protecting, you know, a ski area, if water is necessary for a use, and without that water, that use can't occur, and the public, we authorize whether it's any activity on a national forest, it's for the benefit of the public, and so, if the public can't benefit from that activity without having the water, we just feel that that water should somehow be tied, you know, to the use, and if at all possible, be available for future uses. So, whether something happens with a ski area, whether it's no longer financially possible to operate, you know, that's something we, of course, would sit down and work with them, but in cases where if there's a foreclosure, for instance, and the financial institute needs to dissolve all the assets, it eliminates the opportunity for the public to ever enjoy maybe skiing on that area again. So this is what we've worked very closely to find ways to work with our partners, our proponents of these activities, to find a way to provide the public assurances that when we permit an activity, that we want to be able to maintain that for as long as it's viable possible, and that has been our approach on water. On the groundwater, once again, it's no new authority. It's just a consistent approach, so that we're a more predictable partner with our states, that we can be a better partner with the states, work with them, and have the information to be able to answer the questions. When we get challenged as to, what's the effect of groundwater for a service on your proposed activity? We have to be able to answer that. If not, especially based on the last couple of court cases, we're going to go back and have to redo the analysis.
With respect, it is important to note that not one ski area has ever sold off its water. We had that conversation, and you agreed with us on that, and there is real concern from the farm and ranch community that we are now seeing the federal government not only trying to be able to control the water above, but now below the ground, and this is going to have a real impact, I believe negatively, potentially, on our communities. So, I yield back.
And Congressman, I'm not, to my knowledge, ever since we've had the water clause in our ski area permits going back to the mid-'80s, I'm not familiar of any situation where there's been a financial impact, and yes, I'm not aware of any ski areas selling off their water, but I also don't know that because of that clause, maybe it prevented it. It would be interesting to look at some of the foreclosures that maybe occurred, some of the bankruptcies that occurred over the years with ski areas, to just see, but the point is, is that we've worked very closely with the ski areas, and we will continue to work with them to be able to find a way that we can provide the assurances to the public that that use will continue, versus being in a position that the day when the water is worth more, has more value than the operation of a ski area, that that water would be sold off or used for a different purpose, then the public loses out, and at the end of a 40-year term permit, if the decision is for the ski area not to go forward, well, then that's a good time to have that discussion.
The gentleman's time has expired, and now recognize the gentleman from Minnesota, Mr. Noem, for five minutes.
And suggest that we should have more of these. You know, there's a great deal of concern about the long-haired bat. Excuse me, that was a slip. I was thinking about something else that should be kept out of our national forests. I meant to say the long-eared bat, gypsy moths, emerald ashbores, pine beetles. It'd be nice to hear more about the harvest on our federal lands and the timber sales and the percentage that are being harvested, the biomass boiler rules that are under consideration. Others have brought up wildfire funding, programmatic environmental impact statements. There's such a wide range of things that we need to start working on and dealing with here. So, but with that in mind, I would like to, Chief Tidwell, commend Brenda Halter, who's your supervisor out up in northeastern Minnesota. She does a wonderfully good job and is to be commended, in particular, for her attention to the mixed use of federal lands, including mining up in Minnesota's Iron Range. So, and I want to commend you as well for being here and being so forthright, and selecting a Christmas tree from the Chippewa National Forest, and I intend to be out there to help cut that tree down and escort it to Minnesota. Having said that, I want you to know my wife and I have planted over 100,000 trees in our lifetime, so we don't apologize to anybody for cutting a beautiful one down and bringing it to our capital here. With regard to groundwater, you know, my first and primary concern is whether or not this rule will in any way damage the Paiirian Spring that exists along Highway 6 between the town of Outing and Reamer, Minnesota. There I go misspeaking again. The Paiirian Spring was the fountain of knowledge, and we've been drinking from that one out in Minnesota for over 100 years now. That's right along the highway there, and if you haven't tasted of it, I suggest you do it. Perhaps it would be a good idea for all the members of Congress to go out and take a taste of that spring. It's the one they say where a drink deep or taste not, because their shallow drafts can intoxicate the brain, while drinking largely sobers us again, and what I meant to say was the Artesian Spring, which is in that spot, that I never drive by without taking an opportunity to take a sip of. But forgive me for going off on some tangents here, I just couldn't resist. I do have a couple of questions with regard to groundwater, and I'll just quickly throw them out there. One, does this in any way affect the mining operations that we find in the Upper Peninsula and the Iron Range of Minnesota? Is this directive in any way related to the waters of the U.S. legislation that was recently considered here, and does it treat livestock water in any way differently than snow ski area water, and are the tribes and the states treated equally in this directive? I know there's a whole bunch of questions. Take whichever one you want and the time we have, and see if you can give us some answers here. Thank you.
Well, I'll start with the waters of the United States. You know, this is our internal directive to carry out our authority, and there's really no connection with that EPA, their proposed rule. On grazing, it doesn't make any changes from what we're currently doing. You know, permities apply through the state for their water rights. If they have a well and they have to close that well, they follow through with the state's requirements on that. On mining, there's no additional regulations or anything put into place. It just provides a more It just provides a more consistent approach. And your state, a couple of examples there on the Polymet proposal, we're working together with the state of Minnesota, the DNR and others to be able to do the analysis on the, the effects of groundwater from that proposal so that the state has the information to make their decision, we have the information to make our decision. On another proposal in your state with the Twin Meadows, that proponent, even though it's very early in the stage, they recognize the concern around this. And so we've authorized the drilling of some deep wells in the area that they're proposing to mine so that they can collect the information to be able to understand how their project could potentially affect, you know, groundwater. And so there's a case where two proponents from, on two different proposals there, they recognize that this is a question that needs to be addressed. And either the states, the state needs the information, and in this case, the Forest Service. So by working together, this is the, the best scenario so that we both have it, we have the same information, we both use the same information to make our decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief Tidwell, for the great job you're doing over there at Forestry.
I thank the gentleman. And now please recognize the gentleman from Michigan, Mr. Benecek, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief Tidwell, for being here this morning. I've got a couple of issues that I brought up, and frankly, my concern is that you're having a tough job doing the job you have, you know, already. And to me, this is, you know, adding more to your work list. And, you know, the, the way the procedure works now, as I understand it, is the Forest Service works with the state as an interested party, and when the state develops its ground rule regulations and stuff. So I don't see why, you know, this internal directive is needed since you already have input. And a couple of things that had come to me in your testimony, you cited the Weeks Act as giving the Forest Service authority to mitigate floods and conserve water and surface and subsurface moisture. So what are the examples of mitigate? I mean, what does that mean? How is that not happening now with your conversations within the various states?
Well, an example of mitigation, if there is a, a surface occupancy of, of the national forest that's being proposed and it's going to have some effect on the quality of groundwater, if there's things that we can put into place.
Give me an example, give me some examples of what you mean of mitigate.
It, okay, as far as where, as far as where, let's say, the disturbed area is going to be, if it's going to be, say, on top of a, a spring versus moving it away from that spring to put it over in another place so that that spring.
That would not be addressed by the procedures that are in place now?
Exactly. That's why this is, the only difference here is to have a consistent.
I don't, I don't see that, you know, people can't build on top of a spring, you know, right now.
That's, that's one, one example. Another example is that referring to.
That's not an example that works though.
Okay, for, so with the mining proposal, there are the proposals in Minnesota, we're working with the proponents in the state to evaluate the impacts of groundwater. We had a couple of situations out west in two other states where we had a mining proposal, and we didn't do that. And the court then has directed us, no Forest Service, stop, do not authorize that, go back and do the analysis.
But don't you usually participate with the states? That's more of a, to me, that's more of a oversight area for you and not rather changing the way you do things, it's just that you didn't do what you should have been done already.
But our, our employees benefit from having direction in their manual about what is their responsibility, how do they do this so that we have a consistent approach?
I understand that, Mr. Tidwell.
And that's, that's the difference we're trying to make.
What I'm concerned about is the fact that, you know, when we, we give the federal government more authority to do things, then they tend to override the local concerns. Because we, you know, we're seeing this in the Natural Resources Committee with this Endangered Species Act, you know, several states out west put together a plan in conjunction with the Fish and Wildlife Service, you know, worked with them for a long time to develop a plan for this prairie chicken. And then all of a sudden, the, the Fish and Wildlife, after approving the plan and all that, changed their mind at the last minute and disapproved all that. And I just don't like giving more federal authority with, I mean, you're already in the process of working with the states, why isn't that good enough?
Because we're, we don't do it consistently across the country.
That's not, that's not the problem with the law, that's the problem with your agency. And I'm saying that this is a problem with the, you know, taking on more jobs.
Well, that's why this is internal direction to the agency about to have a systematic, consistent approach so that we're better partners with the states, so that we're, we do a better job to cooperate with the states based in example, the examples I've given, and then also in places where we've not done this. And so it's difficult with everything that we have on our plates, you know, for our land managers to be able to understand, okay, when it comes to groundwater, what do we need to do?
Let me just ask one more question. On your testament, your written testimony, it says through comments on specific proposed Forest Service decisions, and through other avenues, the public has increasingly indicated expects the Forest Service to review and address potential impacts on groundwater. What other avenues are you talking about?
There's, for instance, if there's a proposal that's adjacent to the national forest and it has the potential to maybe impact groundwater on the national forest, the opportunity we have to be able to submit a comment, you know, to that entity who's ever regulate.
Oh, it says, comments through other avenues of public has increasingly indicated. So what other avenues does the public have to comment on, on your decisions besides the comment period that we're talking about?
So on, on the proposed directive, when we actually would then go to, to use this and evaluate it on a project, the public also has a time, opportunity to comment on that.
Well, it doesn't seem like you're answering the question, but I'm out of time. Thank you.
Gentlemen, yield back. And now recognize the ranking member from Minnesota, Mr. Walz, for five minutes.
Well, I thank the chairman and thank you for indulging me to be at a markup on VA. Chief, thank you for being here. Appreciate your work and your agency's work, and I, I think you're hearing it here. We, we know you got a lot on your plate. We know you've got to multitask on a lot of things. Something I would, I would say, though, we are the Subcommittee on Conservation, Energy and Forestry. We have not held a hearing on wildfires since two thousand and ten. During that time, twenty-five point seven million acres have burned, over two hundred thousand incidents have burned. I might mention the gentleman in Colorado, the Hayman and Missionary Ridge Fires together cost three hundred and eighty million dollars for suppression and direct cost to those. Those are real things that really happened that are happening now. And I do not disregard the importance of every issue we talk about here, but we must prioritize, we must move things forward. And when I hear you say, and I heard Secretary Vilsack come to me nine weeks ago and say, you've got to do something because it's impacting our budget across the board, and here's how it's going to impact southern Minnesota, you just told us that a more predictable budgeting measure is the weather for you. When the weather turned in a favorable direction, that was more predictable than us. So I would just like to ask, let, let's have a hearing on Forestry too. I think we could probably all agree. We can do this one, we can do that, we can address some of these issues. The, the questions are valid, there are concerns that are being expressed, but I will have to say, I have not heard them from my people, but it doesn't mean they're not important. And I understand water issues are regional. An issue in California, I had an abundance of water in my district. But as a nation, these issues can't be done. And, and I would also, as someone who grew up in western Nebraska knows, that as Colorado's water rights goes, so goes Nebraska's water rights. And they end up in court. And Kansas just received a lot of money a while back because of that from the state of Colorado. So these are issues that must be discussed federally, they must include inter-agency collaboration, they must include the ability of us to be able to express this. But I am deeply concerned that foresight was given, secretaries and chiefs of the Forest Service came to us over two and a half months ago and said, let's do something different on wildfires and get it going, and we have sat silent. And, and I think that is unacceptable. And I want you and your agency to know, it's not for the lack of you telling us that we have, we have heard on it. So my question to you is, Chief, can you be, can you help me a little more specifically? This helps me when I go home and talk to people. Secretary Vilsack was able to help me out and understand, on these budgeting shifts, tell me what it means. If the wildfire season had not shrunk to these eight major fires you're fighting now, if we had had sixteen to twenty, how would that have impacted other operations? What would that look like at Superior National Forest or Chippewa or things like that?
So on, on your forests, we would have had to stop many of the operations during the month of September. For instance, folks that are out doing surveys, preparing for projects, doing, prepping for timber sales, you know, that would actually be implemented in the winter, that work would stop. And that's what we've had to do the last previous years. This year looked like we were headed there again. And now with the favorable weather, we're doing an, almost an about face here. And I was talking to our folks yesterday that we, now, it looks like we're going to be okay, or just have a, a minor transfer we're going to have to do. And so what can we get done?
If they stop, do they start pulling those things back? Because those things can't happen in a Minnesota winter if, if fork was put off.
They did. I sent out the direction to be prepared with a list of steps that we needed to take to, to be able to, to stop, or we had the option to defer. And for the most part, we defer and postpone these projects. But we lose that field season and, and then thus, we're not able to get the work done, you know, this coming winter, and especially in your, your state where we're able to do a lot of, especially timber harvesting in the winter.
Could you help us understand, and I think this is a fair critique of this, of saying, okay, we were going to budget and we gave you the money, and then you didn't use it. I think there's a legitimate fear on some people saying, would that money have come back? How would we have done it? When you're talking about, and Secretary Vilsack is talking about emergency funding, tell us how that can protect taxpayer dollars by making budgeting more predictable for you.
Well, if we don't use the, the funding for fire suppression, it's still available. It's available for the appropriation committee to, to appropriate it the following year, but we do not spend it. We cannot spend it on, on anything else. So if we have it, you know, it's, it allows us to be able to carry out the direction of Congress when, when they pass the budget, and that is the direction we take very seriously. When we're, we're not able to carry that out the last six weeks or so of the year because we've had to transfer money, it just creates this disruption. It doesn't cost anything more, it's just, as I've mentioned, Congress has been, been very responsive to pay the money back, you know, three to six months later. And so we just, but we lose that field season, we, we postpone projects, and we can't ever make up that time because we only get so much work done in a twelve month period.
So is it safe to say it makes you much more inefficient?
Yes.
Okay. I yield back.
I thank the ranking member for his questions and for yielding back. And now please recognize the gentleman from Alabama, Mr. Rogers, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your testimony, you referenced major aquifers. What's the difference in a major aquifer and a minor aquifer? And how does the proposed directive affect both?
Well, when we talk about it, you know, some of the, a major aquifer, these are the, more of the, the large collections of water that usually are much deeper, but not always much deeper versus, you know, more of a minor aquifer. Often, I think our, our subs, our surface activities are probably going to have a greater potential impact on more of these minor aquifers that are closer to the surface than maybe a, a deep, a deep aquifer. But at the same time, those are the things that we have to be able to, to understand and be able to disclose. Like often, we get challenged that, okay, your activity is going to affect the quality of my, of the groundwater, and I get my drinking water out of that. It's essential for us to be able to, be able to show that, no, what we're proposing here is not going to have any effect. Or if it is, we disclose that, and if there's an opportunity to be able to work within our authorities, to be able to, to mitigate the effects, then we need to be able to do that. But as much of this issue is about not knowing. And so when we can disclose that what the effects are, or that there's no effects, it puts us in a better position to be able to implement the action, and it's actually reassurance to the public. And yes, we want to work closely with the states. And in many cases, that's exactly what happens. And so that we, we do this together, and it's this information that states need to be able to make their decisions, and it's the information that we need to be able to make ours.
Let me ask this. Under the directive, could the Forest Service reduce access to a water right if a proposed activity might adversely affect the National Forest Service groundwater resources?
It could change the access point. If there was a need to mitigate, you know, the impact, and by doing that, by changing the access point, that could happen, that happens now.
So there's nothing different then?
There's nothing different, except this would be a consistent approach so that the proponent on, in your state is going to be treated the same way the proponent would be in Colorado, or in Pennsylvania, or, I mean, that's the difference that we're talking about.
Well, the Forest Service has claimed through the comment period that the public has indicated expects the Forest Service to review potential impacts of the groundwater services. In your opinion, does the word review also mean to manage?
Both terms mean to, to evaluate the effects, and in some cases, to monitor the activity. That's what, when we talk about, you know, manage.
Well, y'all use the word review, I use the word manage. So I'm wondering if there's, if, if you see them as the same thing.
What it comes down to, it's, it's inventory, evaluate and monitor. And it's one of the points that I mentioned earlier, that we use the term manage in multiple places in the draft directive. We received many comments on that, that that's not a clear term. It means different things, and it can be. And so that's one of the things we definitely are going to, to, to work with the states to be able to really be very specific on what that means so that folks don't think that it's managing, like when it comes to allocation of, of water, that is not what this is about.
Where did the majority of the comments during the comment period come from? Were they specific regions of the country, associations, or what?
Probably the majority of them are from the West. We've had a lot of, you know, comments, you know, from states, you know, comments from user groups, some, some comments from environmental groups, conservation groups. But we've had a lot of comments from our states. It's one of the reasons why we wanted to extend the comment period, so we'd have additional time to actually sit down and say, okay, we, we got your initial comment, now we want to talk about it. So we make sure we understand and see that what we, so we know what we need to do to clarify this so that, the intent of this is to be a better partner with our states. This is something we need to work very closely together with, and we want to make sure, whatever it takes, that we clarify that this does not infringe on the state's responsibility, the state's authorities in any way.
Thank you very much. My time has expired. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I thank the gentleman. Chief, I take the last five minutes here or so. I really appreciate you being here and your candid responses. I think you're a great partner to work with for the health of the United States forests and what that means for forest health and quite frankly, our rural communities in particular. So thank you for that. And normally, we're on the same page, we're not on this one. You know, your goal, I think your goal is admirable, but, but it's not the Forest Service's role, my perspective. I think the Forest Service has interests, there's no doubt about it, but you clearly do not have authority. The primary authority that is, is the states, and that's based on a hundred years of, of legislation, including the Clean Water Act, that establishes the federalism model of which the state's authority for, for water, for, and, you know, the, the Weeks Act, which clearly talks about a navigable waterways that makes sure the regular, regulation of flow, nothing about groundwater. And so, and then case law, that's been as far as the Supreme Court on this issue. So I really see a very weak case, which means you go forward with this, you're going to get peppered with what you always get peppered with, which is more lawsuits, which is going to drain more money out of managing our forests in a healthy way. Really encourage you to reconsider as these final comments come in, because I, I think it's going to make your job tougher and almost where this will go from a litigation perspective. You know, the case law defines and upholds a state sovereignty, and I would argue that the separation of water estates in terms of surface and, and groundwater is an important part of the checks and balances, especially in western states where the Forest Service, quote, you know, owns so much surface. This is actually one of the few checks and balances that western states have in terms of having the groundwater authority, which forces the Forest Service, we don't always get great chiefs like you, you know, it forces the Forest Service to be a collaborative partner with our states. This is one of those, those checks and balances, I think, that, that does that. This is one of those checks and balances, I think, that does that. Now, my first question is straightforward. I'm pretty sure I know how you're going to answer this, but I can't help but ask, because it looks like a taking. Is this not a taking, when instead the Forest Service should be working on improving the collaboration with the authority that has primacy on this issue, which is the states?
No, it's not. It has, once again, does not infringe on the state's authority when it comes to allocation of water and water rights in any way. What this is about is that when we are considering an activity on the national forest that has the potential to affect groundwater, we need to evaluate what those effects are, disclose that to the public, you know, so that we understand. You know, for instance, if there's a proposal that would have, would be a large extraction, and based on the analysis that it will de-water all these springs that are higher up in the watershed, de-water this stream, people that have water rights up there are going to be impacted. It may be we have no discretion on the activity, say if it's, you know, for mining, for instance. You know, we, you know, we're somewhat limited there. But we need to be able to disclose that. This is the information that the states want. I think this is the information the public wants.
Well, and I, you've been peeking at my questions, Chief. That was perfect, because, you know, I, you know, I agree that somebody needs to be concerned with that, but it needs, the primacy needs to come from the authority that has responsibility over the groundwater. So my next question has been, because you're speculating, you gave me a "what if." We don't make policy based on speculation, because I could, we could sit here and I could get a doomsday proposal from every member of what could go wrong. We need to deal with data and science. So my question for you is, what data demonstrates that there has been significant harm? And that's the term that is important, significant. There's anecdotal things that may occur from time to time, but I mean, really consistent and significant harm to warrant this directive? Have the states that have authority and responsibility for groundwater, clearly by law, and you've acknowledged that, and I appreciate it, I mean, we're just talking about how do we work together? And you, and I would just want to put the states at the point of despair versus the Forest Service, because legally, that's the way it needs to be. But there needs to be collaboration between the two, and it's, have the states that have authority and responsibility for groundwater file complaints or lawsuits regarding contamination of groundwater from Forest Service surface use? Because that's what this comes down to. Your whole argument is based about "what if."
Yeah, well, I'm not aware of where a state has filed lawsuit. I am aware of where other parties have filed lawsuits, where we did not.
Well, we all know about the third-party environmental organizations that make your life difficult and make our forests unhealthy. And I would argue the negative consequences that we've seen as a result of, this is just my opinion, I'm not speaking for other members, but, you know, the wildfires because of timbering reduction, the limitations we've seen because of various regulatory, you know, waters of the U.S. is going to do that. Endangered Species Act has certainly done that in the western states, you know. Those are all good laws, but it have been improperly administered over years in a bipartisan negative way, both administrations of both parties. And so it's interesting, you tell me you're not aware of, and, you know, and please go back and check with the staff, because I know what it's like. Most of my good information comes from my staff. So if the Forest, if your staff have record of lawsuits that have been filed, or complaints from states, then it'd be good to know about. Because if there's none, then there's not a need for this directive. I understand that, you know, you've stated that mostly through court challenges, threats, let's call it what it is, threats to the Forest Service, and God bless you for living and working with those that you have to deal with. You know, you've, you've talked about what I call threats. You've stated that the variability among the forests and the lack of a systematic approach has been the, what has been challenged. Now, I would argue, and my question for you, is it not appropriate and defensible, given the clear law, the case law, the legislative record, the legal status of state authority over non-navigable and groundwater, which has responsibility by the states? If that's done by a state authority, you're going to, unfortunately, that's, that's the world you work in. You're going to have to be flexible and not have a cookie-cutter approach, which you're trying to do with this directive. You're going to have to be able to come to the table and have a candid conversation. Now, you can do that in an efficient way, maybe working with coalitions of states, obviously, and I think there's a, we're going to hear one of our witnesses from some western states that represents multiple states. But I guess, I mean, that, my question, that's my question, my next question, is it not, isn't that, is the fact that we don't have a systematic approach, isn't that appropriate and defensible, given the legal status of state authority over non-navigable and groundwater?
Well, Mr. Chairman, the courts have disagreed with that. And, you know, the point that we've never had a state is to us.
Well, which point, though? Every court case, including the Supreme Court, I see clearly reinforces states' rights and states' authorities when it comes to non-navigable and groundwater.
Yeah, I'd be glad to provide the lawsuits that we've received when we didn't.
Well, I know the laws, the threats, and those are threats, those are not, those are not legal findings.
But we, well, but we get sued, and the project gets stopped.
I understand, and that is the world.
Because we haven't evaluated the impact.
And it frustrates me as much as it does you, but that does not dictate law. Law, threats should not dictate good public policy. I know the world you work in, and I, and I'm, and I respect you, and I know how tough your job is. But we're lawmakers, and I think we, we take our authority under Article One of the Constitution very seriously of writing laws and enacting laws, and we really, the threats of lawsuits should not dictate public policy.
Well, but in this case, you know, we work very closely with the states, and I think that's why, and I'll check to see if they've ever, if a state's ever filed suit about our activities. But I would be surprised, because we work together on that. And for most of our projects, the state has a decision they're making, like on a mining proposal, they have a decision to make, we have a decision to make. We often make those decisions together. But in these last couple cases, it's been the Forest Service that's been taken to court because the judge found that we were not following, you know, the law, carrying out our responsibility to be able to evaluate what the impacts are.
And I would argue that that judge is completely out of order in terms of the law. All the arguments you've provided, when you read those, I did, I read your testimony. When you, when you look at the wording there, it's, it's very clear. It talks about the regulation of the flow of navigable waters. And I appreciate the difficult situation, you know, that you're in. There's, you know, there's no doubt about it. The, a specific question, you know, I've got to head on back home. Question was, I've heard from some of my constituents who, you know, obviously produce oil and gas. I appreciate, you know, what you've talked about, that, how wouldn't interfere. I am concerned that it actually opens up more nuisance lawsuits, which I'll get to. But in the Allegheny National Forest, fears that this directive appears to be another effort by the Forest Service to manage access to private mineral states. And can you assure me in this subcommittee that the Forest Service has no intention to circumvent the clear message in the rulings of the recent miner-run decision, or use this directive in any way to control access to private oil, gas, and mineral states? As you know, the, in the Allegheny, where, I don't know where we're at, 90-some percent subsurface rights are all privately held. That's the way my predecessors determined to do that. Or deny access of the rightful owners?
We'll continue, of course, to follow the miner-run decision, just like we follow all court directions. But an example there on the Allegheny is that, you know, our, the forest employees are working, I think, very well with the oil and gas proponents about working cooperatively together, about when they're looking at a need to access, you know, groundwater, about where is the location, where they should put the well? If there's an opportunity to be able to mitigate some potential impacts of that, be through the location, we're working cooperatively like that. So we feel that's, that's the approach that we're taking in your state on the Allegheny National Forest. You know, and once again, there's a lot of places where this is working well. And I want to make sure, as we move forward, that what this is a very clear directive, and it's something that the states can understand, and to be able to see that we can be a more predictable partner with them, because often on these decisions, especially the ones where we get challenged on, we're often, you know, both making a decision. You know, the state has their decision to make, we have ours. And so we use the same information. And yes, there's going to be, you know, cases where we're going to have to probably do more than what the state feels they need to do, but recognizing that if we don't, we're not going to be able to move forward with the project.
But, Chief, and I think the only attendant consequence of what you're going to see is, you've got a system that requires a lot of work, because you're doing it forest-by-service and state-by-state right now. I think you're creating more work and more harm, and you're going to ruin those relationships, because you're going to try to create, you talked about a systematic approach, that's a cookie cutter from Washington, and impose that on different states and different forests that have different geological formations and different water, subsurface groundwater issues. And I just think bad things are going to happen. Isn't the approach better, what you do currently? And I want to congratulate you on that with the state of Montana. Montana and the Forest Service have the compact. Isn't that, isn't that a better approach of increasing communications, collaboration, really looking at, so that the state, that authority can let you know if your, you know, if your surface activity is negatively impairing the groundwater, which it doesn't seem like there's any cases for that, but that just seems like a good model?
You know, the case in Montana is a good model. I think the MOU we have in Colorado is a good model, about, lays out, you know, our responsibilities, how we do this. Ideally, we probably need a, you know, something like an MOU with every state to be able to clarify how we're going to be working together. But the challenge that we have here is that in some states, Montana, places like Colorado, Minnesota, I can go through on a long list, where we're doing what we need to do. But then there's, there's other states, and I'll use the last couple court cases, in Idaho and Washington, where we, we didn't. And so the proponent is the one that gets impacted by this. And, and we can have the discussion that, you know, maybe, you know, the court shouldn't, you know, shouldn't be involved as much as they are, but they are. And so this is an opportunity for us to be in a better position. And the thing that I worry about is having someone else direct us to what we need to do, versus being able to sit down, and your point about, we need to look at this state by state, because in certain states, you know, water issues are different, the aquifers are different, the geology is very different. And so that's what we work out, you know, with the state. But our, our employees need to have the basic understanding that, yes, you need to evaluate, monitor effects to groundwater. And, and right now, where we don't have anything, you know, when even if they've, they've done what they feel is an adequate job, the court says, "Well, we don't think it's adequate." Versus if we have a consistent systematic approach that's been publicly vetted, had the input from most of the states in it, it's going to put us in a better position, better partner with the states, and also be in a more defensible position. So this is really, the intent of this is to really be a better partner and make this less contentious. I am, that's, that's our intent, Mr. Chairman.
Well, and, and...
And I know we've got a lot of work to do on it.
I know. And Chief, and I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your leadership on this area. I guess I'm not as optimistic that these groups that are bringing these lawsuits are going to be satisfied with what you're doing when it's done. I think they're just going to find other targets related to this. Thank you so much for taking time out of what I know is a very busy schedule. I know the full, speaking on behalf of the entire committee, we really appreciate your leadership, and we appreciate you being here, how accessible you are to each of us individually and the committee as a whole.
Well, Mr. Chairman, you and the subcommittee, thank you for having the opportunity to come up here and have the time to really have the dialogue and the discussion. I really appreciate it, and I appreciate you giving us the time to have this today. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you very much. Well, at this point, we're, I want to rec, like to welcome our second panel witnesses to the table. Mr. Tony Willardson, Executive Director of the Western States Water Council from Murray, Mr. Scott Verines, Verines, I only had two choices, I picked the wrong one, sorry. New Mexico State Engineer from Santa Fe, New Mexico. And for purposes of the third introduction, pleased to yield to the gentleman from Colorado.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and it is truly a pleasure mine to have the privilege to be able to introduce a friend and also a constituent out of my district, Don Shawcroft. He's representing our farm and ranch community in this panel. He's the owner of John B. Shawcroft Ranch in the San Luis Valley in south-central Colorado, and in addition, running his cattle operation. Mr. Shawcroft serves as President for the Colorado Farm Bureau. In his capacity of the Colorado Farm Bureau President, Mr. Shawcroft also serves on the Board of Directors of the Southern Farm Bureau Casualty Insurance Company, as well as on that of the Farm Bureau Bank, and the American Farm Bureau Insurance Services, and the American Ag Insurance Company. So he's a busy guy. So, Mr. Shawcroft, Don, pleasure to have you here.
Thank you. Appreciate that introduction.
Well, once again, thank you to all the witnesses for being here. We're looking forward to your testimony. Just know that we have your, your written testimony as a part of the record that all members have received. And so we'll proceed with five minutes of verbal testimony, and pleased to recognize, once again, Mr. Willardson for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the subcommittee, for their opportunity to testify. The council is a nonpartisan government entity that advises western governors on water policy issues, and our members are appointed by the governors, Mr. Verheins being a representative of Governor Suzanne Martinez. My remarks are based on the council's positions, which are attached to my testimony, as well as a letter from Governor John Hickenlooper, who is then Chair of the Western Governors' Association, to Secretary Vilsack, posing a number of questions regarding the directive. The governors observe that the states are the exclusive authority for allocating, protecting, and developing their groundwater resources, and also recognize, given their initial review, that the directive leads them to believe that the measure could have significant implications for our states and our groundwater resources. Secretary Vilsack recently responded to that letter and offered an open invitation to meet with the governors, and we also look forward to looking, working with the Forest Service to be more fully engaged in a dialogue, a dialogue that has not yet taken place. I'd also point out that I appended to my testimony comments submitted by seven of our states, which included South Dakota, Washington, and others from members that are represented here on the committee. The Forest Service should have consulted with us, and we actually believe that the Executive Order 13-132 requires that consultation on matters that respect federalism. It's also been pointed out earlier that they did consult with the tribes, but there was no process directly to consult with the states. And we believe that that needs to be done. You've already mentioned, and we've talked about, the Supreme Court decisions, and also the policy, the acts of Congress, including the Desert Land Act of 1877, that recognized the state's exclusive authority over groundwater. The council is concerned that the Forest Service could put conditions on the exercise of private property rights, which many water rights are in the West. And we agree that they have no authority to limit how we might allocate those resources, but they can have an impact on how those are actually exercised. And there's been little information presented on what is the problem? What is it that the Forest Service is trying to address? I'd point out that actually, we ran some information and found in Oregon, there are some 230 groundwater wells that pump more than 35 gallons per minute. Is that an issue in Oregon? We don't know. But one of the other concerns is that, given the presumptive connection between surface and groundwater that is put in the directive, in Oregon, there are over 18,000 surface water rights. And I think it would be helpful to know those numbers for many of the other states. In addition, you know, there could be restrict, there are restrictions, or talks about possible restrictions on injection wells. We use those for groundwater recharge, on conservation, which could affect the exercise of rights, and requiring the special use permits. And in this area, the state administrators have the authority to consider the Forest Service interests and the Forest Service needs, and for the most part, also have a public interest requirement that they can, that they can take into consideration. The Forest Service has the right to participate in these administrative processes. And the, and one of the big issues for us is going to be the language in the directive that directs the Forest Service to claim... that directs the Forest Service to claim Federal Reserve water rights to groundwater. We do not believe that there's any federal statute, nor is there any federal court case that has ever recognized a Federal Reserve right to groundwater. And in fact, in United States v. New Mexico, the Supreme Court in 1978 strictly limited the authority or the implied reserved rights to surface waters, the minimum amount needed for the primary purposes of the national forest, which were forest production and I would, and the maintain, maintenance of flows, which I talk, I think is talking about watershed protection, because many of us depend on those watersheds in the West for our water resources. And the court specifically denied any implied reserve right for fish and wildlife or recreation uses. So, you know, we appreciate the Forest Service, the challenges that they have to address. We look forward to a dialogue with them, but we do not believe that this is primarily their responsibility. It is the responsibility of the states, and we appreciate your oversight of this action and oppose any assertion of federal ownership interests in groundwater. Appreciate again the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Ms. Willardson. Now, recognize Mr. Shawcroft for five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman Thompson. Ranking Member Walz, certainly Representative Tipton and other members of the Subcommittee. Thank you for holding this hearing. I am Don Shawcroft, a fourth generation rancher from the San Luis Valley of southern, south central Colorado. I am President of the Colorado Farm Bureau, as mentioned, and a member of the Board of Directors of the American Farm Bureau Federation, the nation's largest agricultural organization. We have a strong interest in maintaining the longstanding working relationship between federal land management agencies and public land ranchers. The proposed Forest Service groundwater directive is one of critical concern for farmers and ranchers, particularly those in the West where public land grazing is a vital component of rural economies. As a matter of law and process, this appears to be an effort by administration to grant itself unprecedented control over waters of the states, and ultimately greater control over the natural resources in the West. It is no secret that the Forest Service has long sought to expand federal ownership of water rights in the western United States, and in recent years has repeatedly attempted to circumvent state water rights and appropriation laws. There is no provision in federal law authorizing or permitting the Forest Service to compel owners of lawfully acquired water rights to surrender those rights to the United States. Farm Bureau's opposition of the proposed directive is based on the government's lack of legal authority to regulate groundwater, the directive's attempt to expand federal authority through an interconnectivity clause, and its authorization of actions in violation of the Takings Clause of the United States Constitution. Despite the Forest Service citing the Organic Act and the Weeks Act to justify the directive, the Forest Service does not have the authority to approve or disapprove uses of waters which are granted under state water. Inexplicably, the Forest Service also points to the Clean Water Act as a source of legal authority for the directive. There is no explanation of how the Clean Water Act applies to this directive or how Sections 303, 401, 402, or 404 of the Clean Water Act provide any legal authority to the Forest Service to regulate groundwater. The groundwater directive proposes a new standard of interconnectivity by proposing to, quote, "manage surface water and groundwater resources as hydrologically interconnected, and consider them interconnected in all planning and evaluation activities," end of quote. This presumption implies that the agency has authority to manage, monitor, and mitigate water resources on all National Forest Service lands. Further, the directive expands the Forest Service regulatory scope of groundwater resources to a watershed-wide scale, including both Forest Service lands and adjacent lands and private lands. The Forest Service attempt to use controversial Clean Water Act terminology such as hydrologic connection to establish its authority over water rights is misplaced and unlawful. In fact, the Supreme Court specifically rejected the any, quote, "any hydrological connection" approach to federal jurisdiction in their Rapanos decision. While publicly, the Forest Service claims the directive would not infringe on the state's authority nor impose requirements on private landowners, the facts speak otherwise. The directive specifically states that the agency is, quote, "to evaluate all applications to states for water rights on national forest lands and application for water rights on adjacent lands that could adversely affect National Forest Service groundwater resources, and identify potential injury to those resources," end of quote. This language dangerously attempts to expand federal authority in approving state-granted water rights. This assumption of federal authority violates federal and state statutes and will ultimately upset water allocation systems and private property rights on which western economies have been built. With the exception of certain federally reserved rights, the states own and manage water within their jurisdictions. Farm Bureau supports the present system of appropriated water rights through state law and opposes any federal preemption of state water law. Lastly, the directive would authorize actions that would violate the Takings Clause of the United States Constitution. Under the Forest Service terms and conditions, the agency will now be able to require holders of water rights with permitted activities on system lands to comply with the Water Clause and to hold their water rights jointly with the United States. Further, there is no reference in the directive to the government's obligations to pay just compensation for the surrender to the government of privately-held water rights legally adjudicated by the state. Water rights as property rights cannot be taken without just compensation and due process of law. Through statute and years of well-established case law, states have developed a system that fairly appropriate often scarce water resources to users. Because water is the lifeblood of all farm and ranch operations, we are concerned that the federal government continues to grossly and willfully ignore the established system of water rights, even after continued assurances it would respect them, on behalf of the Farm Bureau and tens of thousands of farmers and ranchers in the West who depend on state-granted water rights. I want to thank you again for addressing this important issue and ask for your help in influencing and urging the Forest Service to withdraw this directive. I'll be pleased to respond to questions from members of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shawcroft. Now, I'm pleased to welcome our, our third final panelists for, for this hearing, Mr. Verines. Go ahead, sir, for about, you have five minutes.
Good morning, Chairman Thompson, members of the committee. Thank you for the invitation to testify here today. As a state engineer, I hope to provide you with one western state's perspective on this issue as the senior water management official in New Mexico. In the business of water administration in the West, our words and the terminologies we use have meaning, and the context in which they're used is, is important. They can raise red flags, as the proposed directive has done here with our agency in our state. My overarching concern, simply put, is that the Forest Service lacks the authority to manage New Mexico's groundwater or to place any conditions on the exercise of private property rights to the use of groundwater established under New Mexico law. Under New Mexico law, the state engineer is charged with the supervision of all waters, including groundwater, within the boundaries of the state and the measurement, appropriation, and distribution thereof, responsibilities we take very seriously and we do all day, every day. Consequently, we will engage directly on any apparent assertion of new authority over, by another agency over groundwater or over private holders of groundwater rights developed under state law. The proposed directive begins with the stated objective to manage groundwater underlying NFS lands cooperatively with the states, suggesting that the service has equal authority with the states to manage groundwater. None of the statutes or other authorities cited in the proposed directive provide such authority. The term NFS groundwater resources, repeated frequently throughout the proposed directive, is ambiguous. It could refer to groundwater rights that the Forest Service may hold or suggest all state groundwater resources beneath Forest Service lands. The Forest Service also lacks any authority to regulate the diversion and use of groundwater or to impose conditions on the exercise of rights to use groundwater developed under New Mexico law. While the Forest Service does have the authority to include conditions to protect federal resources in special permits, special use permits governing the use of federal lands, New Mexico's groundwater is not such a resource. Any proposed directive should state unequivocally that all rights to the diversion and use of groundwater established under state law are private property rights that must be recognized by the Forest Service and may not be restricted or limited by provisions in any special use permit by the service. Service also has no authority over the process by which any state issues groundwater rights, and the service therefore may not dictate how the New Mexico water permitting process proceeds or when it begins. The Mexico System of Water Rights Administration provides water right owners with certainty upon which they can make appropriate technical and financial decisions. Under New Mexico water law, once a water right is established by beneficial use, it can only be lost by common law abandonment, statutory forfeiture, or failure to comply with permit conditions. The adjudication or permitting of water rights under New Mexico law affords the service full opportunity to challenge the nature and extent of groundwater rights that originate within national forest lands. As a pertinent example, and we're dealing with this one today, the village of Ruidoso, New Mexico, is already experiencing an attempt by the Forest Service to limit the amount of water they may divert under existing groundwater rights for wells located within national forest lands. The village is currently in the process of renewing its special use permit for municipal wells within the Lincoln National Forest. The service has proposed to dramatically cut back the quantity of water that the village may divert and use in order to protect aquatic habitat, streamside recreational uses, and other water uses that are not recognized as part of the Lincoln National Forest Federal Reserve water right. I'm particularly concerned about the proposed directive's instruction to Forest Service officials to assert claims for Federal Reserve water rights to groundwater in state water rights adjudications and administrative proceedings. To our knowledge, no federal court has ever recognized a Federal Reserve right to groundwater. I urge the service to work with my office to establish or obtain, under New Mexico state water law, whatever groundwater rights are necessary to support the service's activities. While we can appreciate the Forest Service interest in the protection of groundwater resources, for over five decades, New Mexico has developed an exclusive and a comprehensive administrative process to conjunctively manage our state's surface water and groundwater. In conclusion, in the business of water administration in the West, our words and terminologies have meaning, and they're very important meaning, and they have potential consequences. I urge the Forest Service to withdraw the proposed directive and to address through New Mexico state water law the service's interest in protecting groundwater resources within our state. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to be here today.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you to all the witnesses. I guess I'll recognize myself first. No, actually, I very appreciative of the members of the Subcommittee. We had a good turnout, the, for this hearing. I think that shows the interest, the intensity of the interest. Also, I know that we have rather intense schedules here, so the fact that we did have a majority, large majority of members on both sides at this hearing is very much appreciated. Mr. Verines, I'm going to start with you as a, just a couple question for each of our three witnesses. As a state official, how do you suggest that the United States Forest Service would work in better cooperation with the states?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for that question. We have a lot of interaction with the Forest Service around New Mexico over wide variety of water and watershed health issues, much of which you've talked about this morning. The wildfires have been devastating in New Mexico over, over many years. I think, as I suggested in my testimony, is we have great opportunity to work on issues. Within the state's water law process, there's ample opportunity for the Forest Service to interact with other water right holders. We have a process in place to do that. We have ongoing meetings and dialogue. I think a memorandum of agreement, a memorandum of understanding that came up earlier in the testimony today is a great opportunity for us to get on a similar page.
Very good. Now, you represent a significant portion of, of, oh, let me see here. Have, well, let me go to Mr. Willardson next. Now, you stated in your testimony that the directive requires special use permit holders to meter and report their groundwater use, which may be expensive and could run counter to some state laws. Can you elaborate on this statement, and is this even a feasible or realistic requirement?
Metering wells can cost anything from a few hundred dollars to over a thousand dollars or more, and that is a challenge. And many states do not have authority to require that under state law, and would question the Forest Service ability to be able to do that as well. I would point out, too, that domestic wells are exempt, in many cases, from state requirements. There are other areas, and the groundwater law varies by state, but in some areas, such as Arizona, the overlying landowner does own the subsurface rights as far as groundwater and can pump groundwater. So the variation in the state laws between surface and groundwaters is something that's important and needs to be noted as part of, part of the process. And again, pointing out that the Forest Service can apply for rights in addition to whatever reserve rights it may have for its primary purposes, and that that is an assertion, and even that, the assertion of reserve rights is a process that goes through a state adjudication. And that can be very contentious. And if the Forest Service has needs, there are ways to, to meet those needs. You've mentioned already the Montana Compact that looks at in-stream flows and other issues. Specific to groundwater resources, I'd provide an example in the state of Utah that involves not the Park Service, the Forest Service, but the Park Service and Zion National Park. And one of the features is weeping walls from the sandstone that is fed by upstream groundwater. And rather than claim a reserve right, the Park Service, working with the state, reached an agreement where the state will limit future groundwater development in order to protect the park resources, which obviously are important to all of us.
Thank you. Ms. Shawcroft, you were particularly adamant on the point that the Forest Service does not have the legal authority to move forward with this directive under the Clean Water Act or any other existing law. In this context, can you discuss some of the key court decisions concerning water use over the past decade or so?
I think that certainly the cases that have been decided by the Supreme Court regarding waters in the United States, I think, are reflective of what extension there is trying to be forced as far as federal jurisdiction over water rights. What concerns me in particular is some of the things that have happened of recent regarding the Forest Service and their extension of authority over water rights. A number of years ago, the Grand Mason Christian Association, which has a campground in Colorado, had had a well that had gone dry. They needed a replacement well. They were forced by the Forest Service as a condition of their special use permit renewal to place that well in the name of the Forest Service. Similar case has occurred, as has been mentioned many times today about the ski resorts. There in fact have been ski resorts in Colorado that is a condition of their renewal of those special use permits, again, that they sign that water right over to the Forest Service. This is definitely a tremendous concern, and it appears to me that there is definitely a conflict of vision of what these water rights are. In the Colorado, and certainly in much of the western states, as has been mentioned, a water right is a property right. It is a personal property right, and in fact, it is tied to the beneficial use of that water in the state of Colorado. When that beneficial use of that water for that particular beneficial use is no longer employed, used in that manner, that water right is not then automatically available to be used for some of their public good. In Colorado, and certainly, as I mentioned, in many western states, it is not for the public to decide how that water right is used. Tremendous distinction, tremendous important distinction of the difference between a water right and the water itself. Recognizing in the state of Colorado, even the constitution of the state of Colorado says that the water belongs to the citizens, but the right to put that use to beneficial use, and because of the scarcity of water in the West, that being put to beneficial use is incredibly important. That's why we have the prior appropriation doctrine, that those who put that water to use first have the continued first right to put that in use. I'm sorry that that doesn't seem to address exactly the, the court decisions, but those court decisions have come through our water court system in the state of Colorado and certainly many states of the West.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you to all three of you gentlemen. Very much appreciate your taking the time and the difficulty it takes to come to the capital city to provide the testimony. Very much appreciate it. I would ask that if, you know, if members of the committee have additional questions that they could forward, if you would consider responding to those, and that would be very much appreciated.
We'd welcome that opportunity, Chairman.
Help us as we continue to provide oversight and look at this. Before, and before we adjourn, I want to thank our, our witnesses. I also want to take the opportunity to thank Chief Tidwell. I'm not surprised, but very appreciative of the fact that he stayed for the, this, this second panel, because I think that's reflective of the chief's dedication to, to, you know, try to make the right decisions and to, you know, to get information, be open to information. So Chief, thank you very much for taking the time to do that. Greatly appreciated. Under the rules of the committee, the record of today's hearing will remain open for 10 calendar days to receive additional material and supplementary written responses from witnesses to any questions posed by a member. The Subcommittee on Conservation, Energy, and Forestry Hearing is now adjourned. The Subcommittee on Conservation, Energy, and Forestry Hearing is now adjourned.